6:01. Oh, well, I know. Well, I'm looking at that clock and it's not right. It's 6:01 and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can we all rise with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our January 5th Select Board Meeting. A couple of our select persons are with us via Zoom. Heather, can you hear me? And Lee, can you hear me out there?
I sure can. Hi, everybody.
Great, great. The first item on our agenda is to approve our minutes from our December 15th Select Board Meeting. And that's a, that was a public forum meeting regarding the mask mandate. And there's quite a few pages on this, 21 pages on there. I got about halfway through it and then I kind of bailed out on it. And I just want to remind people that besides these minutes, the recording of the meeting on SAPAT TV has also entered into record as being a...
So I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the December 15th, 2021 draft minutes.
Second it.
Second.
Your motion and Jeff Holden's second here. I, sorry, Lee.
That's okay.
Any changes, corrections, omissions, errors, anything that anybody has seen?
I have a couple.
21 pages.
So on page two, first line, line one, Mr. Hussey's name is misspelled. Line 13, Chris Plum is called Chris Clum.
Hold on a second, page 13?
No, line 13, page two, sorry.
Okay.
So it's same page, 13th line, it says Chris Clum instead of Chris Plum.
Wait, is that on the December 15th minute?
Yes.
Yep.
I don't have those errors in mind.
I have a copy. It says draft cop, draft minutes, so I'm not sure if it's not the same.
That's what I have. I do have Chris Plum's name wrong, but yeah.
So on that first line, Lee, of that page, it says Mr. Hussey, H-U-S-E-Y instead of U-C-C-I.
U-C-C-I?
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. Sorry, I missed that.
And I too fell asleep while I was reading these. Actually, I didn't, I read the whole of them, but that was the only changes I had.
It's never taken me two full hours to read what's coming up tonight.
Just like to thank Susan Bailey for taking these minutes. It's not anything to do to try to capture what's going on at a meeting like this. And she does a good job.
You're welcome.
I was very impressed.
Yes, thank you.
Any other corrections, changes, omissions, errors? Anybody else have anything else?
The one thing I saw, Michael Allen, A-L-O-N, was spelled right, the first printing or first page. But I, and I think I circled it, but again, these are 21 pages, so, but it was spelled incorrectly as we've been along.
Do you remember where it was, Lee?
I'm looking right now. Ah ha, page eight, line 45. A-L-O-N is how you spell his last name.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else? So all those in favor of approving our December 15th minutes with the corrections stated, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? So that's December 15th. The next one is December 17th, the special Select Board Meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the December 17th minutes.
Is your...
I had, I had one question that I circled and this was on 17.
Lee, I'm going to make you a second on that before we start talking about...
Oh, I beg your pardon.
Go ahead, Lee.
Just line 22, resolution, I think it's a...
Which page you on, Lee?
Page one.
Okay.
Line 22. And so I circled it, but maybe that was before we decided we weren't doing a resolution, but rather a, like the Select Board did at Springfield, but rather a recommendation.
Correct. At that point, we were talking about a resolution, sorry, Arnie.
Okay, very good. Then there's no issue there.
Anybody else have anything on the December 17th minutes?
I think on page three, line 36, encourage, I think I had to, it was a misspelling.
See, I can't spell, so I couldn't tell. Anything else? All right, so all those in favor of approving our December 17th minutes as written with corrections stated, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? And the last one, December 29th.
Make a motion to approve the December 29th minutes.
Second.
So Lee Gustafson's the motion and Lee Dakin's the second. Any corrections, errors, omissions, changes, anything on the, our December 29th minutes?
I haven't...
On page three, line 34, the first spend, Arnie said, and Arnie said spend they could spend. So I think that first spend needs to be deleted.
Thank you, Lee. Anything else? Everybody have anything? All those in favor of approving our December 29th minutes with the corrections stated, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? All set with those. Next item is citizens' comments. If there was someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Is that a hand up under...
It's the cursor.
No, that's the cursor?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Lee. No one for citizens' comments? Okay, we'll go right on to old business. Julie, can you take us to our old business?
Yeah, there's not a lot. Everything's been focused on the budget for the most part. So you did ask that COVID be put on and stay on. The statements that you approved at your December 29th meeting are up on the website. They have been moved to be more front and center, a little more visible. And a PDF document has also been added. That was Sean's recommendation. Easier for somebody to just kind of print it out, download it, print it out if they choose to want to hang it in their business, they can. I emailed all of you. We put out on the Facebook page and on the website today the COVID response tree, which the Vermont Department of Health has put out. I just tripped on it today. I don't know how long it's been out there, but boy, it really was a very useful diagram of what to do, vaccinated, unvaccinated. If you have an exposure, it was a great, a great document. So that is on the website as well and has been put out on Facebook, just a great tool for people to know what to do. So that's there as well. And then the other item is the Andover contract, which is on the agenda. It's on the agenda as an executive session. We don't have to use it as an executive session, but it's there in case you, in case you choose that. That's all I have for old business.
All right.
I have the COVID tree thing. I printed it off so my guys can refer to it.
Absolutely.
If they have any issues.
Yeah, it's just so much easier.
Yeah.
Yeah, just follow the, follow the arrows and answer the questions. It kind of does that.
I kind of wish I'd be to found that a lot earlier, but anyway, there it is.
Makes it a lot more simple.
Oh, yes, than reading the pages and pages.
Where you gotta go. And hopefully answer no to most of them as you go in.
Exactly, absolutely.
But the cases are, they're accelerating. They're getting more and more. And I'm just thankful that there's not as many hospitalizations and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anybody else have anything on old business?
Um, Arnie, this is Heather. When are we going to discuss the information about cannabis? Is it now or is it later?
We could, we could discuss it when we get to our, review our draft town warning. Because we were going to include it, it would be included in that if we're going to have it for the town meeting for a vote then. But I think it's going to warrant a more in-depth discussion also as a warned agenda item also. So we could touch it a little bit now and then at our next meeting, have a little more in-depth discussion. So we still have time to take, to get it on the town warning if we so desire. If that's how it's going to work out, but yeah.
Well, I just, I respect where you'd like to discuss it. I just don't want to end the meeting without discussing it.
Okay, nope.
Thanks.
Anything else on their old business? All right. So the next item is our town warning. And basically it's a review. This, everybody has a draft of it that was included in your package. And I guess we go through it.
You do. I will say very first, one thing that you will want to decide. So the legislature right now is addressing an amendment that would allow the same process essentially that we did last year for town meeting to carry into this year. They have not yet voted. The voting is supposed to take place, the latest I heard was they're anticipating the vote will take place tomorrow. That would allow us to basically hold a hybrid town meeting like we did last year. No action from the floor. All articles become Australian ballot. So think, while we don't have the authority yet, it looks like you will have the authority. So that's just an option that you have if you want to go that way, throwing it out there at the beginning. Because that'll change how we warn it, but...
Thank you, Julie.
And we felt it, Debbie, I talked to Debbie today, you know, how do we feel about how it went last year? If you choose to go that way, we have no issues. We, it flowed very smooth last year. We had no concerns if that is the way you want to go again this year.
Given the discussion over the last three meetings, my recommendation would be to do as we did last year.
I think so as well.
I would agree.
Me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I, I agree to do it if we're empowered to do it that way. Because I believe it probably will be most inclusive for those who want to participate either way.
I agree.
I agree.
So it seems like the consensus of the board is to, when we get the authority to do it, just do it like we did it last year.
Okay, okay. All right, I'll let you know what, what ends up happening in the legislature.
So I'll go through the town warning and Town of Chester warning, notice of town meeting. The legal voters of the Town of Chester are hereby notified and warned to meet on Monday, February 28th, 2022 at 6:00 PM for an informational meeting on the following articles. Voting on articles one and two will be by Australian ballot. Actually, voting on all the articles would be by Australian.
This paragraph, this paragraph will change. This paragraph is going to change. Yeah, so I wouldn't even worry about that right now.
So Article One, to elect town officials for the ensuing year as provided by the public laws of Vermont. And as I go through this, if anybody has any questions or concerns, just speak up when I'm done reading the article. Article Two, shall general obligation bonds or notes of the Town of Chester in the amount not to exceed $280,000, subject to reduction from the receipt of available state and federal grants in aid, be issued for the purpose of additional funds. Be issued for the purpose, oh.
Keep reading. It'll make sense when you read it.
It doesn't, yeah.
Yeah, it'll, it will.
Be issued for the purpose of additional funds to complete Popple Dungeon Bridge, grant match on the Route 35 construction and paving the town garage, Flamstead Road and Wheeler Road. Now, the question mark must be because we're not sure about one of those?
No, it's because the whole paragraph is a question.
Oh, shall?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you. Said projects and paving to be financed for a term of seven years. Article Three, to see if the town will vote to raise, and of course, that's going to be the number that's going to be at our next meeting, to be paid to the Chester Town Treasurer on September 15th, 2022 to pay current expenses in any part of the town's indebtedness, indebtedness. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to purchase the following equipment through the Capital Budget Reserve Fund. Pickup truck for highway in the amount of $40,000 less any trade-in, to be financed for a term of four years beginning in 2023. A second pickup truck for highway in the amount of $40,000 less any trade-in, to be financed for a term of four years beginning in 2023. Cruiser for the Police Department in the amount of $41,000 less any trade-in, to be financed for a term of four years beginning in 2023. Mower for the Cemetery Department in the amount of $15,300. All as indicated on the Capital Budget Reserve Fund schedule unless any, unless any grant funds that may be received.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we put a colon after the word fund in the second line.
Yep.
So this is going to be assuming that both those pickups are going to be paid through the capital?
The capital. The budget that you're looking at tonight has moved that because we had such a large deficit in highway.
Instead of paying it cash out in that one year, we moved it back.
It essentially adds $12,500 to, it's not a huge add to the capital plan.
So it was like $28,000, $30,000 difference on our end because it's $12,000 instead of 40 for the whole year. I mean, we were going to pay it 40 in one year.
Out of, out of the highway budget. Now it goes to the capital plan. It'll buy, it'll be $12,500 for four years of the capital plan.
Article Five.
Actually, it's less than that, but anyway, go ahead.
Shall the Town of Chester appropriate, appropriate the sum of $4,000 to the Meals on Wheels of Greater Springfield Incorporated for continued support and services to the citizens of the Town of Chester in accordance with 24 of VSA 2691. There should be a question mark on the end of that?
There probably should be on all of them, yes, Arnie.
Now that you got me going on.
Yeah, there should be on all of these, actually.
Shall the town, Article Six, shall the town appropriate the sum of $2,500 in support of the Chester Fireworks for Independence Day in accordance with 24 of VSA 2691? Article Seven, shall the town appropriate the sum of $13,807 to help support the home, health, maternal and child health and hospice care provided in patients' homes and in community, community settings by the Visiting Nurse Association and Hospice of Vermont and New Hampshire in accordance with 24 of VSA 2691? Article Eight, shall the town appropriate the sum of $3,044 to help support the outpatient, mental health and substance abuse services by the Staff of Healthcare and Rehabilitation Services Incorporated in accordance with 24 of VSA 2691? Article Nine, shall the town appropriate the sum of $3,040 to Southeastern Vermont Community, Community Action, SEVCA, to assist Chester in responding to the emergency needs of the community and providing all available and applicable services to families and individuals in need in accordance with 24 of VSA 2691? Article Ten, shall the Town of Chester appropriate the sum of $900 to the Women's Freedom Center for General Budget Support to provide services to women and their children who are experiencing emotional, physical and/or sexual abuse in our residents of the town in accordance with 24 of VSA 2691?
I have a question, Arnie.
Yeah, go ahead, Lee.
If these are new, and I don't remember this article as written in the past, would we have someone at town meeting speak to this? I mean, in the past, when we've had someone speak to an article when they're asking for funds? And certainly any funds that are increased also fit that bill.
So none, none of these articles, none of the special appropriation articles are new or are larger amounts of money? They're all the same as last year.
Okay.
We do always recommend to all of them that they have somebody present to answer questions. That is in their best interest.
Okay.
But none of these are new and none of them are increased amounts. Article 12 with the mover used to be the current, but the name has changed. That's the only change on any of these.
Okay, thank you. I did not remember the Women's Freedom Center, so I'm glad to be...
That was added 10 years ago. I think it might have been new last year or the year before, one year. It's relatively new.
And they usually have people to speak to these issues. I mean, it's rare, it does happen, but usually there are people that would answer any questions or are there to speak for the issues that are presented. Article 11, shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $1,200 for the support of senior solutions, formerly Council on Aging for Southeastern Vermont, for help to support seniors and their families who are trying to remain at home and not be placed in a nursing home in accordance with 24 of VSA 2691? Article 12, shall the Town of Chester appropriate the sum of $2,250 for the support of mover Rockingham to provide transit services to the residents of Town of Chester in accordance with 24 of VSA 2691? And like Julie said, it was, the, the old name was the current and now it's the mover. Article 13, shall the Town of Chester appropriate the sum of $800 to support Windsor County Mentors for youth mentoring services provided to children in Windsor County in accordance with 24 of VSA 2691? Article 14, shall the Town of Chester appropriate the sum of $400 to Green Mountain RSVP and Volunteer Center of Windsor County to develop opportunities for people age 55 and older to positively impact the quality of life in the community of Chester through volunteer service in accordance with 24 of VSA 2691? And Article 15, shall, shall the town appropriate the sum of $1,800 towards the support of community care networks of Chester and Andover Incorporated, a nonprofit organization which provides services to senior citizens, helping them stay in their homes longer safely in accordance with 24 of VSA 2691? And Article 16, to see if the Town of Chester will appropriate the sum of $3,000 to assist in the services of the Chester Andover Family Center for individuals and families in need in accordance with 24 of VSA 2691? And Article 17, shall the town appropriate the sum of $1,500 to Neighborhood Connections Incorporated to cover the cost of providing services in Chester in accordance with 24 of VSA 2691? So those are the 17 articles that are presently on the town warning. Heather, you spoke about the retail cannabis article. Now, that would have to be added as a separate article. And I believe in your package...
It came as a separate email.
Julie, oh, yeah, had an email out that had some information for people if they were interested in seeing how that would work and how it would be worded and how it would go forward. I think it would warrant a item on an agenda, a warned item on the agenda. So we can get some input from the public. I mean, we did talk about this last year, I think right before town meeting. And we kind of put it on hold partly because the state had no clue what was going on. And there were a lot of details and a lot of issues that weren't answered yet. They've gotten a little further with it as far as the revenue and the taxing and how it's all going to work. So the information is out there. And I think it would be appropriate at this time to get the town people involved in the discussion to see where they would like to see this town go regarding this issue and then possibly present it for a vote to the people to decide. I mean, that's kind of how I'm thinking about it and looking at it. And I'm welcome for anybody else's opinion on how they would like this, to see how this would work or see how we would proceed on this.
I think we need to have a, like you said, an in-depth discussion about this whole issue. Get feedback from town, the towns, the community. And then I guess, depending on how that meeting goes, it would determine whether or not we put on this warning or not. What's our timeframe for this? I don't want to get in the weeds, but...
So the warning, the town warning needs to be set and signed at your next meeting. Now, that being said, you can certainly call a special meeting later in the year on Justice Topic. It's my understanding that the school will be having a special vote. I mean, this is a, this is an item that has to be voted by Australian ballot anyway. So my understanding is the school will be having a special vote on their bond sometime later in the year. You could always tag on to that. You know, there may be other opportunities throughout the year. Doesn't, you know, if you don't want to rush it and just slap it on this, this warning, you can certainly have a special meeting later.
Well, I guess that my question wasn't necessarily relative to this warning, but when do we have to make a decision about the cannabis or do we?
What the LCT is providing me, I, doesn't really appear that there's a deadline.
Okay.
From the documentation that I have, it doesn't appear that there's a deadline.
So we're not forced to vote on it as a town this coming town meeting? We could vote on it at any point?
As far as I know, at this point, that's correct. Yeah.
Well, and my reasoning for bringing it up is, you know, for several reasons. One, if we have to vote on it and we would have to have a special election to do this, that's costly. So if there's another opportunity to put it on the ballot, that's fine. That we wouldn't have to have a whole vote just for this item. And it was my impression at some point that towns did actually have to either vote to opt in or opt out. Now, what I briefly read, I didn't study all the information, and thank you, Julie, for getting that to us, is we can vote on it. And now my question is, there's two ways to vote on it. And I didn't quite understand, the one, should the town be, allow cannabis retailers? Another one says retail portions of integrated licensees. I don't understand that. Do you?
I read that too. I didn't understand it either.
So we don't have, um, integrated, the way I'm understanding it, the integrated licensee piece is the retail portion of somebody. There are five facilities, cannabis marijuana facilities throughout the state. That applies to those facilities. Chester does not have one and we are not who would establish one. That, that are, there are five allowed in the state. They are established by the Control Board is my understanding.
Excuse me, Julie, sorry to stop you. What kind of facilities are these?
Those are the production facilities, the medical.
Oh, growing?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not sure if that's, if that's the case. I thought it was the ones that are the medical marijuana facilities. Those are the integrated ones.
There's a definition here. Integrated license means a person licensed by the state cannabis control board to engage in the activities of a cultivator, wholesaler, product manufacturer, retailer, and testing laboratory in accordance with state law. That's what an integrated licensee means.
So my understanding that there was a deadline at some point, and I'm sorry for being confused.
No.
But what I'm hearing now is we can vote on it anytime, there's no deadline, and we can also vote to rescind this decision also. But if we voted to have it, then we voted to rescind it. The people who would be awarded the privilege, the opportunity to sell retail cannabis items would then be grandfathered in.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. So if we don't vote on it this year, we can vote on it anytime?
That is my understanding, and I will pointedly ask that exact question of the league. I will ask just that question and see what I get for the answer. When this came out last year, they initially said it had to be voted in 2022. But that was at the very beginning of all this, when they were still figuring everything out. And it was at that time last year that VLCT came out and said, wait a minute, there's no major hurry. You're asking towns to vote on something when you don't even have the rules figured out. So that was all, that was all stayed in the legislature.
My understanding was they didn't even have the cannabis.
Correct. That's just been.
Control board appointed, so.
Correct. That's all just happened. So in everything else that I am reading, there is nothing about a date of when you have to have this adopted. In the meantime, however, tomorrow I will go, I will call the league and ask Garrett that question. Does this have to be done in 2022? And then we'll just have.
Or does it ever, does it ever have to be voted on?
Yep.
Option in and out?
Yep.
Because before you actually had to vote.
Right.
No, my understanding was that if you want, if you wanted to allow retail marijuana sales in your town, you opt in. If you don't take any action, you don't do it, and it's not allowed then.
That's my understanding.
That's.
But I will confirm that.
You don't have to opt out, but you have to opt in by vote if you want that to, you know, if that's, if that's the case.
I will get a definitive answer from the league.
And from my perspective, I would rather the citizens choose than the board.
Well, this, yeah.
At this point.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and I, go ahead, Lee, Lee Dakin. I see your.
No, I'll wait till you finish, Arnie.
I was just going to agree with Heather on that, that I think it's a decision that the town should make. As a, I mean, we could not take, we could decide not to take it up and not bring it to the town vote. It's up to us. You're not even required to have an informational meeting if we wanted to go that route, too. But I think an article like this and a decision like this should be a town decision.
Well, honestly, I think we're getting further ahead of ourselves than we should be at this point, so not that I'm disagreeing with the discussion, but I'd like to have more time to prepare so that we can have an in-depth discussion about the whole thing. So that's my point.
My question, may I?
Go ahead, Luke.
Is the wording of a retail establishment already selling or, you know, products? So I immediately go to the CBD, and I know that was grown, you know, the cannabis was grown, like we already know how that's done. But these are products to me that are related to the cannabis or marijuana, if you will, that will be sold or if it's voted on to be done in our town. So when I hear the word real estate establishment, I think that's what, what was said, how does that only compute to medical marijuana?
So it, so it doesn't. That's talking about if they're, if in your town you have one of those establishments, which Chester does not, because the state hasn't authorized it for Chester.
Medical marijuana, you mean?
Yeah.
Right.
There's five in the state.
Yeah.
Right, the medical marijuana, most, yeah. I understand that.
It's a dispensary, and it's not just medical, it's a dispensary. But it's, those dispensaries are allowed to have a retail portion. So that language is if your town has a dispensary in it.
I see.
That vote is to allow the retail portion of that dispensary to sell items retail in your town.
Thank you. I really appreciate the clarification.
So what I'm hearing is we, we have to get some more information on this and have a better discussion on it as a warranted agenda item. The reason I think it should be done sooner than later is because when it came up last year, we said we were going to try to get this ready for this year. And we didn't only because the state fell through on their end of it as far as getting a lot of details in place. Now, they've finally gotten to the point where they do have some details about the taxes, about what works, what doesn't work. And all this is going to take effect in the fall of 20, of this year, when you'll be able to open up an establishment to, for, you know, retail sales. Now, if someone's going to be doing that, there's a lot of paperwork, there's a lot of legal work involved, and a lot of other things that have to happen. So I think it would only be fair that if someone's interested in doing that in the town of Chester, that we provide them enough time so they can do what they have to do to establish their business or do whatever they do. Now, whether we have this meeting, this vote on town meeting day or not, or if it's a special election later on, that's fine, too, because I don't think it's worth rushing at this point, because we're not going to be able to have an informational meeting quick enough and still get it on the ballot for.
Unless you have a special meeting. I mean, unless you meet a time before the 19.
Yeah, but there's, it seems like there's a lot of questions and a lot of discussion that would surround us. So I, I would rather have it at a regular, regularly scheduled meeting and have the information and the people more aware of it than try to get it quickly in right now just so we meet that extra deadline for this March, but.
So that would mean the next meeting?
Yes.
We would have to have that discussion at the next meeting in January 19?
And make a decision.
Right.
Um, is it, sorry, can I say something?
Go ahead, Heather, go ahead.
Is there a possibility of having someone for half an hour, 45 minutes at the next meeting or at some meeting soon to discuss, that knows this issue well, like someone from the league? Because if I was a business owner wanting to do this in October, to your point, Arnie, I mean, we don't have to rush to get it on the ballot this time, but it also seems only fair that they know in advance if they can do it in Chester. If that's what we choose, or if they are not allowed to do it in Chester. That also would be good information for people to have.
No, I, I agree with you on, on, on those points, Heather. If people are going to be starting a business or if that's what they're inclined to do, it would be good to know if the town is going to be allowing it or not allowing it, because that's, I mean, that's the first step for anybody that I think that wouldn't want to open up a business, so. I think the sooner we do it, the more it would help if it, you know, either way, whether it's a yes or or no.
Um, Arnie, there's a question from the Chester Telegraph, and they're asking, can a resident submit a petition to put it on a warning?
I don't know the answer to that.
I would, a resident can, 5% of the voters can petition almost anything. Yeah, I would say, yeah. I can, I can get a confirmation, Sean, and email you tomorrow, but I would say yes at this moment.
I mean, the wording, the article that, the example that they gave wasn't a very lengthy, shall the town authorize cannabis retailers in town pursuant to 7 VSA subtitle 863? And that was.
That's the question, yeah. That's, and that's, that's the question.
Yeah.
You know?
I mean, everything else that goes with it, all the details, or their laws and their, it's governed by zoning and retail and everything else that you kind of already have in place. But that is the opt-in part that you would present as one of the items on the town warning. Or, like you said, if it was a petition by 5% to have it included, then it would work that way also. So I hope that answers his question. Anything else on this, on the town warning?
I had a question, actually. I know that the funds that have been requested, we do this every year, and it adds about a penny to the, to the tax rate. I'm wondering if it would make sense for people, I know they can get a copy of the, what do you, what do we call it? The diary?
The town report.
Town report, sorry.
Yeah.
I know they get a town report and add all these numbers up, but it would make sense for us to have a sheet in there that says the sum total of all these articles not related to the town is $38,241.
So last year, when we, the budget that we put in the town report, so once you set your budget, there's in a section that has those, and then the net.
Okay.
Of them all. So I'll intend to do it the same way we did last year.
I think if I remember, it was like 37 or something like that.
It's like 37,000.
Yeah. And the town report will have some kind of statement from each one of these groups.
They, they give a report that goes in the town report from each one.
Perfect.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anything else?
So the only, so what am I, I'm getting, I'm going to find out, do we have, if we choose, if we're not interested, do we have to vote to opt out? Is there a deadline? I'll confirm the petition. Was there any other specific questions you wanted me to get answered?
I don't know yet.
I think what I've heard a lot of talk about, and maybe I've missed some of the details, but it was, what are the financial benefits for the town of Chester through taxes, through this? Who's going to, who will benefit the most from this? Now, that's been something that's been talked around up in the legislature, I believe.
So what?
And maybe there's a finalizing on that, I don't know it.
My understanding as of this moment, that unless you have a local option tax voted in your town, there is no tax benefit to your town. We will, the town of Chester will get no tax benefit from cannabis sales in our town.
Well, yeah, and that's, I'm not sure if that's true, because then they were talking about a 2%.
Well, as of, as of today, that, if they're staying where they're at, correct. Will it change in this session? I have no idea. But they're pulling pretty heavy to no, was what Gwen told me this morning.
So the bill becomes law on October 7th. So that's, that's the deadline that we're talking about as far as if, you know, if you were going to open up a business.
Well, you could theoretically open up a business after it becomes law.
Oh, yeah.
It's not like.
No, for sure.
Everybody has to line up before.
No, no, no. It's, sometimes we, as a board, we act to encourage businesses, but now we, I guess certain businesses we want to encourage and other businesses, maybe we don't.
I think something like this should be decided by the voters and not us.
Yeah. And if you need information, the retail cannabis, I guess it's Act 164, then it's S54? What's S54?
Well, one, one bill replaced the other one. So the S will be the Senate.
Yeah.
The Senate bill, where's mine?
And it's Act 164.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's a lot in there. And the VLCT did break it down. If you go on their website, if you want to get some information specific to how it affects the town and the details that are of a concern for a town, they break it down and they explain it pretty well about how it would work and how things happen and what goes on and stuff like that.
Great, thank you.
Jeff?
Yep.
Um, you said that you wanted it to be decided by the voters. When would you want that on the agenda, I mean, sorry, a ballot?
Um, I'm, I don't think we should rush it. I mean, there's, they're still trying to figure it out up to the month of the year. I mean, they're voting on it tomorrow, and, you know, it, I'm not against it, but I think it should be done mainly by the, the people that live in town, if they, if they're for it or not. I mean, everybody knows it's legal now, and people don't, that want it don't have a problem getting it, you know? So I don't think this is detrimental either way. We're not, I don't believe it's going to be a tax benefit to us. I don't think the town's going to get a bunch of money for it. In fact, there may, may be a cost on the, on the law enforcement end that's going to cost us. I don't know. You know, I don't, I don't have all the, all the information, but I just think it's something that should be done by the voters and not us.
I do think we need to have a in-depth discussion about it, just to make sure that we're all understanding what the ramifications are. And understanding what the state's going to do is probably top on that list.
There were a lot of people interested in this topic when it first came up about a year ago, right around this time, too. I think it was a little, a little before this, so it's.
Unfortunately, they didn't have anything figured out. They didn't even have a board.
Which is why, which is why we put it down the road a bit, because it was, the details weren't there and stuff. But they're there now. They're, it's, you know? And I think you're right, Lee, we got to have an agenda item for this so we could discuss it a little more in depth and stuff, because we're kind of on the boundary of a warranted, of warranted article on our agenda, and it's not really. But it is related to our town warning, so we'll take it from there, and we'll get some more information at the next meeting. We could put it on there to start.
Absolutely.
And we'll probably come up with some more questions and more things that we need to find out at the, at our next discussion.
I'll see. I mean, we have several things on the agenda next time, but I will see if I can get somebody from the league to join via Zoom, because then they could at least answer more in-depth questions, so.
That would help.
Yeah, I'll see if I can get somebody.
That's great.
All right, anything else on the town warnings? And next item on our agenda is our general fund budget review and our capital plan review. Julie, I think you could take us through this one.
I can. There is not a lot of change since the last one as far as items, line items, 2022 budget line items. The 2012, 123121 numbers are in the 21 actual column. That's where we've landed. Highway is ending with a deficit of a little over 118. Their accumulated, accumulated years, they still are holding a surplus of about 50, a little over 50, which is, 56, which is helpful. So the remaining general fund budget to not include highway is ended at 181, 1818, basically. Again, variant reasons why that is, the majority of that is attributed to the public safety building and the unanticipated unbudgeted items that came with that building that we were unaware of. So that is 140 of that 181. In the talking, we're having some lengthy conversations with the auditors. The fiscal year 20 audited general fund unassigned fund balance was 585.7, which is a very healthy fund balance. So in speaking with the auditors, they agreed that, you know, maybe the best way to handle this deficit this year is to let it fall through to that fund balance. If we do, you still are having a fund balance of a little over 400, which is still a very healthy fund balance.
Our goal on the fund balance was only 500,000.
We're over the goal, exactly, bingo. So it's, it, in speaking with them, I mean, I've been struggling for two weeks. been struggling for two weeks on trying to figure out how to make up this deficit. And when I spoke with them, they're like, you don't. This is the reason that you have a healthy fund balance is precisely for this reason. You don't want this to happen every year by any stretch of the imagination, but, you know, COVID is a prime example of why financially you need to have a healthy fund balance because of unanticipated things like a pandemic. So that's kind of what I'm proposing. That's what, you know, in speaking with the auditors, they certainly are in support of that decision. The, so leaving the 21 actuals going to the 22 budget, currently at this moment, it's reflecting an increase of 61, 461. I did hear back in the meantime from Scott Wonderly regarding the fencing, and Chief Cloud is here, that 61 still includes the 17,000 for the fence. And I know you guys had some questions. I have spoken with Scott. We've emailed back and forth with Turiginus. And Scott's recommendation is that you, to accomplish what we want to accomplish, do an attractive fence, which is what we had picked out, and then he will supplement with shrubbery to kind of make it look nicer and more attractive. If you have nothing but a shrub, nothing but a straight line of shrub fence, safety-wise, you're also providing an avenue for people to hide behind that and jump out at you, too. But an attractive fence line with some plantings, like what he had proposed in his original plan, you could kind of mix the two and make it attractive. And that would only be on the visible part of the fence. Once it goes kind of down the bank a little bit and just runs to keep people from coming into the back part of the field, that wouldn't need to be done fancy. That could be done in a less expensive fencing, for sure. That really, at that point, is just to keep kids and animals out of the training area for if dart is landing or there's canine training or something along those lines.
Julie, where's the actual property line? And I'm assuming that the fence will go right on the property line?
It would come a little bit to our side of the property line.
So where is that? Is it at the bottom of the ditch there?
Actually, isn't the trees that planted there actually?
Chief?
Come to the mic. Can just pull it down, Rick, if you want to sit.
It's actually my understanding, when we did it, a lot of the trees that are on Pleasant Brookside are actually on our property. So even if we came in a little bit, it would still not be, it would still all be on our property, but kind of in that ditch.
Yeah, I just wasn't clear how much land we owned there. Okay. Thank you.
We've got room. Yeah. Yeah. So I think at this point, that's kind of the last remaining. I did, there's a couple of lines that I gave a little bit more leeway to, where the numbers we've seen fluctuating up and down, but nothing has changed dramatically from what you've been viewing right along for the 22 budget.
So Chief, while you're here, let me ask you about the fence.
Yes.
So I'm here.
I don't get the fence at all, as far as the parking area goes. The parking area sits like about six or eight feet higher than the land that's down below there anyway. So what's the purpose of that fence there and where does it go? Right up on the edge of the pavement or down the hill? Or, and what is the purpose of it?
The purpose of the fence was, it was going to go in the ditch from Pleasant Brook, or Pleasant Street, straight right back down to the Brookline where the town property line is.
Yeah.
The reason, it was three major reasons. One is because vehicles are parked there a lot of times overnight and everything, just for a little security, so people aren't coming right over to the vehicles. The second thing was, the problem we've been having there is dogs and stuff coming over from neighbors. They come flying in to that area and they walk them out back and they do that kind of stuff. So if we're doing a training, either we're doing fire department training, police training, or canine training, just having those dogs and other animals come flying over to where we're training is just an unsafe area for everything. And the other reason for that back area is, like the other day, when London Dairy Ambulance, if they have to secure a landing zone, they do it at the Catholic church. So behind the emergency service building, there would be actually a dart landing, would all be lit up and everything, and they would come in and land. There wouldn't have to be any fire department or anything else there, because it would be a legit landing zone. So it's just so that when they're coming in for a landing, there isn't dogs, cats, people, kids running over to see the helicopter when they're coming in for a landing. So those pretty much are the three reasons that was there.
I just, you know, when I, I got to tell you, the building's brand new. We're just, I haven't even been in it in a half a year, and we're starting to add things to it. I have a hard time justifying adding things to a building that we just got into without living there a little bit to see if there's going to be issues or what's going to happen. I understand the helicopter thing. I mean, is there going to be more expenses with that later on? Lights and landing stuff? Or, I mean?
I believe there's going to be lights on the back of the building, but that should be all, we've talked about grant funding for that. And the fence was originally, in the design, we had talked about it, but it was one of the things that was cut out because of the expenses that, you know, we're planning for the future. So.
And the property along the parking lot is up higher, and then it drops down and there's a drainage ditch that goes through there?
Correct.
And then the fence would head all the way to the river?
Yes.
Also, I can vouch for, I've seen a lot of people that live in Pleasant Brook, they walk through there on an angle when people's vehicles are parked out there at night or whatever. But also, you know, it'll deter people from being out there when people are coming in for an emergency call or fire call or something. They're not in the parking lot, in the way, or, you know, that type of thing. But it also helps kind of protect the firemen's vehicles and stuff, too.
But I mean, up to this point, has there been an issue? Has there been any vandalism or anything that happened that?
We've had two incidences where people have come over where officers had to remove them from the area. So.
There's two people that did what?
Chief, I didn't hear that. Could you please speak into the mic?
There was two different incidences where the officer, police department was called because of incidents that happened there. One was in the parking lot, and one was behind the parking lot, where the people were, you know, removed, escorted out.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I'm a little bit with Arnie on this. The building is so new, and I can't remember how much we wanted to pay for landscaping. 35,000? I'm not sure. I don't remember. But we didn't do that. We took that out. So I'm a little concerned that already we're, you know, they're our neighbors. And, you know, to put up a fence, I'd rather, you know, have the 17,000 be used for landscaping or somehow reaching out to our neighbors, not excluding them. Certainly down the road, if there's going to be a landing pad and all of this, you know, we've just spent 4 million plus, and I'm not really there with the 17 for the fence at this point.
So Heather, I don't mean to disagree with you, but I'm going to kind of, 17,000 to me is a cheap insurance policy to keep somebody from getting hurt or killed. You know, the issue is that there's training. We included that rear part of the facility for training purposes. And the fact that we have that facility, we don't have to go somewhere else. It's saving us money in the long term. But if somebody gets hurt or killed because they're not paying attention, or a chopper comes in or whatever, I think the 17,000 is cheap insurance to prevent that. Also, what Jeff mentioned about people coming in at, you know, in anticipation of going out on a call, I think there's also that safety issue that we have to be very, very careful of. So, yeah, I agree with you. It's not money I'd like to spend. Certainly, if the building were in the middle of nowhere, we wouldn't have to spend it, but it's not. And so I think that we need to carefully consider the fact that we may need to spend a little bit of money to protect life, and that's what that building is all about.
Totally agree with you on some points and disagree with you on others, but it's not a helicopter pad right now. And if people, where I understand the fence to be, it's not going to preclude people from walking around and going in front of a fire truck coming out or this or that. So, and the two incidences that have been, couldn't we do education and do some landscaping before we put up fences? It's just, I think putting up a fence before you have a helicopter pad, before you do that, is just, I disagree with you on that one. I think the timing's wrong, and I think the priority should be different.
I guess, sorry, Jeff, I guess I'd like to see some more details about the design of the fence or the plantings or whatever it is that Scott's recommended before I make a decision. But I do feel strongly that regardless of whether it's a helicopter pad, it is a training ground. It is a training area, and it does need to be treated with respect and be off limits for people who are not participating in the training, especially animals that you can't control, like dogs that may come running over. I just see it as a potential for safety problems.
Well, and aren't we supposed to have our dogs on leashes if off of our property? I mean, you know, there's orders.
It's for the property. It's for other dogs coming onto our property.
No, I know, but I think there are other ways of handling it, like having someone in the training go and say to people during our training, which is how many hours outdoors a year, you know, you aren't allowed on the property. It's an opportunity to communicate with people, not just put a fence up. So I disagree.
Well, one point I was going to make was, what I was trying to make was, the apartments right next door have multiple little kids. They're not always watched. And when, you know, they wander over into the parking lot or down back or whatever, when the emergency vehicles or people are coming in for an emergency call, they shouldn't have to be worrying about if a kid's going to stepped out from behind the car or if somebody's dog is going to be out there either. It's a liability thing.
And the biggest thing with kids is?
Well, is this, was this, it makes it sound like this was the wrong, the wrong site to put the building. I mean, if we were so concerned about bringing cars in and out, why would we put the building?
It's a central location for response and ability to respond to emergencies.
Chief, you have something to say?
You know, it's like any place, you know, people let their dogs out on the back porch, out on the back lawn there. 99% of the time, it's fine. And when their kids are out playing, they're usually, you know, they're all good. They're right there. But when they see the lights, the red light flashing, or they see a helicopter coming in, it's natural for the kids to run that way or want to go see what the lights are. And that's why the precautions are there.
I, I agree with Lee about the fence and maybe a general plan about how it's all going to look and where it's going to go and a little more detail on it and stuff before we turn around and approve something. Getting Scott Wonderly involved, I think, would help as far as the landscaping and part of the whole plan. I wouldn't mind seeing the whole plan for that whole property laid out and spelled out exactly what's going to be happening to that whole piece of property in the future, because already there's been a lot of work to drop another ramp down on the other side near the police side, which is great. I mean, you get into a new house and then you figure out there's a few things that you got to change a little bit or, you know, make a little different because of, you know, design or whatever to accommodate your needs and stuff. There's parts of the fence that are brand new that are laying off to the side already. So I think it's kind of.
Those are, those are getting put back up. It just ran out of time this year.
Oh, okay.
They're not laying there forever.
Well, I see the big ramp down on the other side that was added and stuff, and it makes sense. You get into a place and you start realizing, wow, this would be good if we had this or that. But the fencing part, I would think it'd be nice to see the whole layout. So what is our final goal for this area, for what it's going to look like, what the fence is going to look like? How are we going to deal with the neighbors and stuff? Maybe just the bigger fence at the bottom where the heliport part is, the part, I mean, I don't know. I don't know all the answers and stuff, but I just want to make sure when we go at it, we go at it with a plan.
Yep.
And some ideas and stuff that everybody's on board with and stuff. And there's just one other thing is, we talk about getting hurt or killed and stuff, and I really don't think that's the right way to frame the conversation. So if we vote this fence down and somebody gets hurt, it's going to be on me because I voted a fence down. Hurt or killed, and accidents happen all the time, all over the place and different things, and you can't prevent. There's risk in a lot of things. Will it mitigate our neighbors from coming over and stuff? Yeah, I guess it would, depending on where it is and how it works and stuff like that. But to frame it that way, it's a little unsettling to me sometimes. I mean, I don't want to see anybody get hurt. I might not want the fence, but it doesn't mean I want people to get hurt.
No, and certainly that was the intent of my comment. And I may have overstated that part of it, but I do feel like we need to be careful and make sure that we are protecting the public. So, you know, take it for what it is.
Well, and, you know, I have supported the building and the people who work within the building to keep us safe. So I kind of feel that the fence doesn't necessarily hold that, you know, I don't think a fence is going to make it necessarily any safer. And anyways, and we've spent a lot in the last few years, and, you know, I think we need to look at landscaping and some other things in a whole, the whole approach to what we want to do.
I agree with Arnie that I'd like to see a long-term plan for where we're going to go, where we're going to spend the money. You know, a fence may or may not be the right solution for the problems that we have there. Maybe it is, maybe it's not, but without seeing the details, it's really hard to make that decision. So Julie, I guess I'm going to throw this back in your lap and see if you can work with, I don't know if it's the building committee or you or who is going to work out the long-range plan for the site, because we have had a lot of things come to our attention as a board of what we're going to use the back area for. And if we do turn it into an emergency helicopter, landing pad, how does that work? What has to happen with that? Or if it's just for training? You know, those types of things might be worth thinking about and saying, all right, in two years, we're going to do this, and three more years, we're going to do that, et cetera. So does that make sense or is that?
It does. I will not have that for the next meeting.
No, no, I'm not asking for it in the next meeting.
So my question is, do you want the 17 in the budget or do you want it out?
The consensus of the board on this one.
So do we need to make that decision today?
So what we?
You need to make it by the 19th.
What we did is got some different prices on the fence. We put that money in there, and then we were going to get, you know, a design and everything, but that is the rough estimate what it would cost to build the fence.
And again, I don't mean to pick on you, Rick, but that would be from the street all the way back to the Brook?
Correct.
Okay. So I guess if, I don't know, if you can get some more detail from Scott or put something together and just send it by email for us to?
I won't have it from him by the 19th. He is bare. He's slammed.
Okay.
So I will not have a plan from him by the 19th. I will not have a plan from him until the spring.
Okay.
His recommendation with, to me, was to talk to Springfield Fencing to pick out an attractive fence, which we already did, in that if fencing is the way we wanted to go, get an attractive fencing, have that installed, and he will supplement with shrubbery. But that doesn't sound like what you want. So if we're going to do a longer-range plan, no, I will not have that.
Okay. So what does an attractive fence look like?
Well, our first attractive fence looked very attractive, and it was very much out of the budget.
Yes.
So we've come down, and this, what this is, is the nicest-looking black, simple fence that you can do at a reasonable price.
So is it like chain link, wood?
Yes, but a black chain link fence.
Okay.
It is a chain link?
Yes.
I didn't think we went with a chain link.
We did, because the other ones were so expensive.
I know. I didn't think this one was a chain link.
It was a chain link.
Okay. I don't want chain.
Because that was the.
So, black chain link is, oh.
That was the cheapest, and that's what we came up with a price. You could do different prices, different fences, all kinds of it. That was what I That was what I did for a price so we could get something in the budget to try to get something up there this year.
Okay.
So you could go with a lot of different things.
Right.
My concern was with the wood fence or other things that, what's gonna be painted graffiti and that kinda stuff.
Right, yeah.
There's different things to look at it.
And then, is there an option in your mind for putting the fence up from the back of the Pleasant View driveway back to the road? Would that solve most of the issues relative to animals and kids?
The problem is, is if you make it there, it's a pretty easy access just to come around because it's still gonna be lower than where the helicopter, you know, it's gonna be pretty low. So we went all the way out, it's not something where, it's another 150, 200 feet to go around to go look at the helicopter. So it's a little...
Right.
If it's just right there, then it's simple to go around.
Yeah, no, I understand, but it would at least be a visual barrier that people would have to work to get around.
Yes.
Well, and have we, has, have the select board, we've heard kinda about the helicopter pad, but have we approved that? Do we know the cost involved for Chester and that? So the assumption is the $17,000 is gonna be for a fence that's attractive, that's black chain link, to keep people out because there could be this helicopter pad. But we, I don't even think we've approved the helicopter pad or know the cost of that to the voters. So I'm concerned about us running forward with these ideas without some of these ideas really being approved by the board. And I think that that should be approved by the board.
So setting the helicopter pad aside Heather, it was initially approved as training area, which is why we spent the money and made the time to clear it all out and make it accessible for training. So without the, regardless of whether helicopters land there or not, it's still gonna be used by our emergency services personnel for that training purpose.
Right, and I recall that, but training isn't done 365 days a year either. So, you know, that's another thought.
So the helicopter pad would not be any different than the actual training facility that's there, it's just a flat area.
Right.
There's nothing that's just plowed in the winter, it's nothing different, except for the two lights that might be, have to be added. So it's not like a paved area or specially painted marked area or anything, it's just a flat area.
Just an open area for a helicopter to land if needed.
Correct.
But I guess, from my perspective, the detail that you just gave us, chain link fence, six feet tall, front to back, 17,000 roughly, I mean, is that optimistic estimate or is that pretty good?
You know how steel prices are.
Yeah.
There might be a two-foot fence, but...
All right.
Arnie?
I, Lee, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm pretty naive and I don't know how many families live in the apartments, I don't know how many children are there. I, because we're a public safety facility, the first thing that popped in my head was education and talking to people about what it's all about and why they're seeing the lights and how important it is to know what's going on there, but also the safety concerns that people have. And, you know, that's, I think that having conversation and communication and teaching opportunities with the neighbors might be very worthwhile.
I hear your point and I agree with a lot of what you said there. And we're still gonna come down to whether we put this 17,000 in, into budget or we don't, or what direction we're gonna take with it. So I would, I mean, for us, it's, for the emergency service, myself, Matt and Amanda, you know, we've seen the problem, we've brought it to you.
I cannot hear the chief.
Sorry. The emergency chiefs, you know, looked at some of the problems with, you know, there. So this is one reason, this is something that we felt would solve the problem. You know, it's not our decision whether you're gonna build it or not build it, it was just something we put forward to you guys. We see a problem that could happen, this is one way to fix it and then, you know, it's your decision after that.
Consensus of the board on how you wanna go with this?
I think there's a need. I've, I've been in emergency services for 30-plus years, one way or another, and I've seen what happens over there and I know the purpose of the building. I know there's the neighbors and it's nothing against anybody over there, but I just think it's, would be safer situation to have a fence for when people are responding, training or whatever.
Lee, you wanna put it in or don't you wanna put it in?
Um...
I mean, that's what it's coming down to.
Yeah.
I mean, and how we do it, maybe there's some details that we could work out before we go spending the fence. And because there are some questions, whether I'm forward or not, there's a lot of, okay, the fence is going up, but I think the details are gonna be important too.
You were talking about the plans, I mean, it was originally in the, in original plans. It's not just something that's popped up.
Well, it has now because we haven't voted on it.
Right.
But you could allocate the funds and a fence is not going in next week anyway.
Right.
So you could allocate the funds, give time to come back with the long-term plan that you're asking for as far as landscaping and those types of things. And the 17, we can, you know, you have 17 in there, we can do $17,000 worth of whatever you approve in the spring or summer. Or if you don't want anything done this year, I mean, if you don't approve, allocate some form of money, nothing will get done this year. So you could think of it that way as well.
But it's okay for us to allocate the money and then make decisions later, because then it seems like we're micromanaging it almost.
Well, the whole conversation is micromanaging it. So, but you have questions and they're valid questions and that's, and that's fine, that's your function, right? So, you can allocate the funds, it doesn't mean, just because you allocate money doesn't mean that we just go randomly spend it however we deem appropriate. We can do this with the caveat that we don't do it until we come back with a bigger part of a plan. There's nothing wrong with that.
So, Arnie, let me just...
And if it doesn't get spent, it doesn't get spent.
Let me just ask you this question. It sounds like you're okay with spending the 17K if it's not for a fence, but for landscaping or something else to beautify the building, is that...
You're getting close. It, like a combination of the two, I think.
Well, I agree with you, I mean, I'd rather, I'd way rather spend the money on plantings and making it look nice, but we have an issue that has been identified by the chiefs of each one of our emergency person, emergency services. And so, how do we address that in a way that shows that we're concerned for our public safety personnel and our neighbors? And, you know, is a planting gonna do that? Maybe. I mean, I brought up Arbevite, it certainly would keep people from just charging through that area, but there are drawbacks from that and that is people can hide behind them or, you know, just go through or whatever. Whereas a fence is a little bit more difficult to get around, especially a six-foot one. But is that how I'd rather spend the money? No, absolutely not. I agree with you, I'd rather see it spent on nice plantings and some of the beautification, the landscaping that has been proposed for that building. Does that solve the problem?
Arnie, I have a recommendation.
Hang in there Heather.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I was done, thank you Heather.
No, I under, I understand what you're saying about where the money's spent in the safety thing and stuff. I just don't agree with it being framed that way. Cause the fence might not do anything either. It might help, it might not, it might jump around, it might be a hole underneath it there. I mean, sure, I just agree with Lee on her point about the education point with the, with the people next door also. I mean, if the first thing we're gonna do with our neighbors is put up a six-foot fence that goes the whole length from the river to the road, it kinda sends a signal. This is how they wanna deal with the problems, they wanna put up a big fence and if there's some issues, then we don't have to worry about it cause we can't get by the fence anymore. I used to think that a firehouse and a police house was where kids ran to, hung out with, ran by, you know, played there and stuff. And sure, you're pulling in there for an emergency call and stuff, you don't wanna run a kid over, you don't wanna hurt nobody. Nobody wants to do any of that stuff. I just don't like the message that a fence like that sends to a segment of our population that is challenged next door. And there's, I mean, there's issues next door. I agree with you, there's, it's a lot going on there.
Right. And hopefully with the fence, if that's what happens, the parents, you know, do bring the kids over and, you know, there is people that come over to the front and look at the fire trucks and everything else. And that's what we want. It's when the kids are out back playing and they, you know, they're in the playground and they're by themselves, which is a back corner, which is fine, but then all of a sudden, you know, mom goes in for a few minutes and all of a sudden they see the lights and all of a sudden the kid takes off, that's what we're trying to avoid.
So it seems like more important, the back part of it, that needs to be fenced off, the part that goes down the hill and there? I mean, that's where the helicopter thing is and that's where all the training's going on and stuff, more, more so than the parking lot.
And again, I, I don't mean to pick on Rick, I think for my purposes, I'd like to see the details, but I don't know that it's our business to make those decisions about exactly where the fence goes. You know, I understand what you're saying, Arnie, I agree with you. In a lot of respects, I think that, you know, what kind of signal are we sending? But on the other hand, if we protect one life, is that worth it? You know, and again, I don't mean to go there, but, you know, that's what keeps coming back in my head.
And I think it's perfectly fine that, if the money's allocated, that we come forward and say...
Hang in Heather.
You know, get with Scott and say, hey, look, maybe a four-foot fence is fine with, maybe a four-foot fence is fine, you know, with some trees and shrubs or, you know, do we need a full six fence? But something, but when we talked about shrubs, most of the time shrubs start growing and then there's perfectly placed underneath for kids and everything, so we need something down there. So, that's my only thought. And I would be more than willing to, you know, to work with Scott and come back with a proposal and say, hey, look, this is what we're looking at for, you know, a training area and this is kinda what we're doing for buildings or not really buildings, but like a six-foot wall or a tunnel or whatever we're doing back there. So you can kinda look at those kinda things.
Go ahead Heather.
My turn, okay.
Sorry, it's hard to keep everybody going.
Please, fire ambulance should be connected to the community. Before we put a fence up, I want to study the issue of how does that affect our neighbors? How do our neighbors, who, some of these individuals are challenged? So to just put up a fence and say sale, I don't think is the message that I wanna project to our neighbors at this time. So what I recommend is, and this is a little bit crazy, but $20,000 into the budget for landscaping of, the beginning of the landscaping of the property that may include a fence and it may not include a fence. And have we shopped around enough for the fence? Have we checked all over? And a chain link, black fence, whether it's black or not chain link, is not a welcoming thing. And this building is, we've put a lot of money into it, it looks fantastic. We want our community to want to be a part of what we've done. So I don't mind putting $20,000 even into the budget for landscaping slash fence design, but I do not want to shut our neighbors out. And Lee Dakin's comments about education and supporting people and the inference that mothers aren't watching their children is, is very upsetting and offensive to me. So I just wanna say that. I'm with Arnie, no one wants to hurt a kid, no one, you know, no one wants to hurt a kid or anybody and we can't think we're, when people are rushing in to go to a call, they shouldn't be rushing fast enough if something does happen that they have to slam on the brakes. I mean, you know, police vehicles shouldn't be chasing someone at 110 miles an hour and hurting someone, we know these things. So anyways, my feeling is that we put 20 grand into the budget for landscaping and possible fence for this site, but to have a plan approved and voted on by the board before we implement this, that's my opinion, that's my suggestion.
I'm gonna have a hard time to where to go with this one. It seems like we're willing to spend some money to do what we have to do and it's gonna come down to who's gonna make decisions. I'd rather, I agree with you Heather on even the 20 grand, but I kinda would rather see it go to the committee that did this building in the first place and make the decisions as opposed to the select board. I think...
Well, we voted, but we, they came to us with the plan and we voted that and we asked the voters to spend the money and this was the architecture and this is what we recommended and we voted on it. So I think if the committee wants to come up with Scott with a plan, that's fine, but I think in light of the feelings towards a fence and education and everything else and how we project ourselves as neighbors, we, and what would the impact of a fence be on Pleasant Brook? I mean, I don't know, is, do they plow into that area? There's snow, like what impact does a fence have on our neighbors? So I don't wanna put, I don't wanna see a plan then and not just abdicate my responsibility.
So what I'm hearing maybe is that we put 17,000 or 20,000, leave it in there, earmark it, and then as time goes on, we could figure out how we're gonna spend it or what's gonna happen with it. I mean, that's the only thing I could see happening at this point, cause we're not gonna be able to decide fence, no fence, this, that or the other thing without any, maybe without, without more information, without more people's inputs about justification for what's going on. Put the place marker down, put the 20,000 in and we'll have to figure this out at a future date before anything happens.
And I'd like the select board to be a part of that.
Yep, we could, well, the place card's in there and we could decide how much the select board's gonna have say in it when it comes along to spending that money. I mean, we still can make that decision, one way or another, depending on, on the consensus of the board at that time. But the, the way I figure it, the money'll be there and then we'll just tackle this problem down the road. I'm just kicking the can down the road right now so we can get through the budget.
So I'm comfortable with the 17,000.
I'll second it.
I don't think we need a motion on this, though.
No.
We just need a consensus of either leaving in that amount, 17,000 or Heather's idea was to increase it to 20, or not at all.
Well, I think it should be under landscaping, I think not fencing. For me to feel comfortable with leaving it in at 17 or 20 and to have a commitment that the board sees the plan.
It's undergrounds maintenance Heather, so it's not, there's not a line item for fencing, it's grounds maintenance, which is where the landscaping was called.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll leave it at 17, it'll come back before the board. Is that okay with everybody?
It's fine with me. And I volunteer to be part of that building committee as I was before, help out with that.
It took a little longer than I thought it was gonna take. Any other questions or any concerns regarding that one particular issue before we go on? All right. Thanks Chief.
No problem.
Appreciate it. Heather, oh yeah Heather. Julie, where were we?
There's nothing else that's really changed in the budget from the previous time that you've looked at it. That was the one topic that you had left over from last meeting.
So are we voting on this next week or today?
Next week, next week. During the next week and a half, I'll be going through, looking at everything one more time, having department heads look at their budgets one more time, so that it's ready for you for adoption on the 19th.
So just to refresh my memory on this, the new budget is approximately 61,000 more than the old budget?
Correct.
Correct. So that's what, about a penny and a half?
Not quite, yep.
Somewhere, not quite a penny and a half. Somewhere, not quite a penny and a half. Our deficit's going to be taken from the fund balance, which is still plenty have, I mean, it's still pretty substantial. It's still over 400,000. We're only looking at a 500,000 fund balance to have in general as we went along. Turns out we were, we did better. I mean, it's an unaudited amount.
Well, the 585 is, is unaudited.
Unaudited. So that could change possibly a little too. I mean, I might even go.
The 585 is audited.
Oh, it is.
It's an audited number. It is, it's the A N, it's the A N that's doing it. It has been audited.
Oh, oh, okay. So that's the number.
That 585 is an accurate figure.
That makes a big difference. Cause otherwise I thought it was going to fluctuate up or down a little bit.
The 585, no, the 585 is your fiscal year 20 audited figure. That's where that number came from.
All right.
Correct.
So with the, uh, the deficit of the 180 coming into there, that brings it down to around 400,000.
Correct. And the deficit is not audited.
No.
That is not.
And that's the one that could change.
That is the one that could fluctuate. Yep.
I'm glad someone understands all this. Sometimes.
I think we've done pretty good considering the year we've had for it to be this close in our budget.
I think the town has done a great job. Julie and all the department heads as far as keeping the expenses down. And out of that 180, 140 of it was stuff on the, on the building that, you know, we weren't aware of, that we needed to have done as it was going along. So I mean, it really only is, we're talking 40,000. And I think a lot of that probably was, uh, the legal fees on, on different items that have come up during the year and stuff. So I mean, considering everything that's been happening and going on, I think we're in pretty good shape. And I think we're in pretty good shape compared to a lot of towns around here too. Cause what I hear from Julie and other folks that there's, uh, towns with a lot of issues and a lot of deficit numbers and red numbers showing up. So, so we're doing pretty good. So if, if we, if we stay with this and these numbers come through and the final things happen, it looks like a penny and a half on our tax rate, which is not bad considering the prices of things, the way they're going right now. I know in my field, the prices have almost doubled in places and stuff. And minimum of 10 to 20% increases on a lot of things.
And that's if you can get, get the products.
Yeah. So I think we're doing pretty good with all that. Well, thanks Julie. Anything else on, any other questions or concerns regarding the budget?
I, I think that it's the reserve fund that, you know, um, years ago, we didn't have one. I'm just really thankful that we have one. I mean, there were a lot of issues that went into the 140,000 dollars, um, that we didn't realize that it was outside of the project. But, um, you know, I'm really happy we have a reserve fund and that, that policy we implemented, was that last year or two years ago?
Yeah, I, I agree with you. The fund balance is really helpful when it comes to trying to balance your, uh, your expenses and your income and stuff. At the end of the year, when you could look at your checkbook and there's still, uh, $580,000 in it, uh, it's, it helps. It helps, it helps with our tan note. It helps with our finances. It helps with a deficit that pops up now and then. And like Julie was saying, if it happens every year, that's a different story. But, uh, it helps with the, uh, the bumps in the road that we've encountered over the years and stuff.
Well, but it also supports the notion of putting some money of surplus away. So if we're in another fortunate situation next year with the surplus, um, it's a good thing to put it away for a rainy day.
All right, thanks. Anything else on the budget? Any other questions?
No, but I, may I please make an apology?
What's that?
Somehow I missed out on the last 10 minutes of this when I hit something on my computer and it just went totally blank and I had to figure out how to get back to the meeting. I apologize.
It's okay. Capital plan review? I mean, that's.
There is one thing I need to, one change I need to make for the better. So the first highway pickup truck, the 40,000, um, I have it in here at 11,250 a year. That's for the one that's 45,000. So, um, that'll, that 11,250 will be changed to 10,000 a year. For the one that we're taking out of highway, putting in here.
Putting it back in here.
That's the only change in capital. But I will point out, you will notice in capital that at the end of 2022, we will be landing with a fund balance in the capital plan of about 290,000.
You mean carry forward for, to the next year?
To carry forward for, to 2023. So.
And, and 23 and 24 were the, uh, the hump years?
23 is the last year of the 2016 bond. Um, 24 is where things start to go down, but they really start to go down in 25 and then 26. Now, mind you, we haven't budgeted anything in the future. Um, but I think until we get through 20, really 24, we just kind of go one year at a time. And then we'll start looking to do long-term planning, but.
Well, even the carry forward from 2021, that's 491?
Yeah, that's, but, but you got to remember that because we didn't, we budgeted or we moved 200,000 into the fund balance for the sidewalks, we didn't construct sidewalks this year.
Okay.
So that, that's part of that.
That's why that number looks.
You'll, right. You'll, you'll end 2022 with the 291. That's a little more accurate. But we haven't touched that fund balance. We're letting it go because it could prove to be really helpful in 23 and 24.
Yeah, just keep it in there.
Right, because we do know an ambulance purchase is going to be coming in 23.
Yeah, so, so whether you call it a fund balance or a reserve fund or whatever, these are monies that are carried forward that are a surplus, not a surplus, but they're in there to.
It's your fund balance, just like your general fund, fund balance. This is your fund balance in capital. This is where, how you get to that is where, you know, we vote to spend $41,000 on a cruiser. Comes time to buy the cruiser, Rick gets a great deal. It only costs 30,000. Well, you've transferred in the 41,000 because that's what you need to do because the voters have said to do that. But you end up with $11,000 of extra and it just sits there. So that's how that number grows. Um, we take our best guess at what the costs are going to be the coming year and we shop around. So.
Anything else on the, uh, capital plan? Any questions, concerns, anything? All right. So at our next meeting, everything should be finalized and we'll go forward. If the way it looks like, it's going to be about a penny and a half.
Yep.
We'll take it from there. Future agenda items, new business?
So your next agenda is going to be relatively full. You are going to have planning commission here to, uh, talk about the parking.
Cobble tree.
A cobble. They are also going to be presenting you with an interim adoption on one item that they need corrected in the bylaws. Huh?
Bumble loose?
Correct. Um, and so again, I'll have you fully prepared, but there will be a public hearing that starts the meeting and it is to change. Um, right now, uh, if a building has been vacant, its use only lasts for two years. We want to change, the planning commission would like to change that rule to be it can last for five years. Um, it will help a few businesses in town, um, with some permitting issues while the final, uh, bylaws are, are being worked through. So this is an interim change that they kind of need to take effect sooner rather than later. So interim adoption is easy. You have your public hearing. You go into your regular meeting. You can approve. It's effective immediately, um, in this type of a measure.
There's no waiting period or?
There's no waiting period on an interim, uh, rule for what they deem to be an emergency measure. How there's an emergency in planning, I don't really know. But, um, we all kind of, it's kind of a laugh, it's a laughing joke. But it, but it is allowed by law. It is a legal.
It is when it affects a business in town.
That's right.
That could possibly be used for what it was built and designed for.
Correct.
Five years is enough?
Five years is enough. We believe that five years is enough.
Cause there's a couple of other buildings.
Yep.
Out on 103, I mean, that, that'll, okay.
They've looked at all of it. They've had discussions at their meetings and looked at it. And, and Preston's recommendation and the planning commission's recommendation is five years should cover it. So you'll have that. Then of course you're going to have cannabis. And then you're going to have the budget and the capital plan. And you'll have water sewer budgets at that point too. And your warming.
All right.
Some of those should be quick, should be quick and shouldn't take long. But you may have some on there, items on there that could be lengthy discussion. So it'll be a bigger meeting.
Does anyone have anything they would like to see on future agendas? I have one, uh, item that, once the budget's done and things quiet down in your office, I'm really interested in the, the piece of property on Lover's Lane. The one next to the pinnacle.
Vermont Forestry Funders?
Yeah, the forestry. I, to get the, get the information on that as far as the ownership, uh, the stipulations on the contract, on what's going on with it and stuff, the fact that it's for sale. It's, it's just, it's so much part of the pinnacle already. I mean, the trails cross it, people cross it. It's part of it. I'm just interested in whether it's something that the town could pursue or not. I mean, maybe there's something in the deeds or something going on that would prohibit anything from happening. But I think it would be at least worthy to investigate to see what the story is behind that piece of property. It was originally donated to the Vermont Forest Reassociation as a public forest for the town and now it's on the market. So I'm just very curious about that.
Sure.
We had talked about the solar field also.
Solar.
Yep.
Talking about that.
Anybody else have anything they would, uh, like to see in, on future agendas? No? Uh, the next item is the Andover contract.
Thank you Rick.
We could do this in executive session, but I don't think there's anything in here unless someone sees something that they would like to, that we have to discuss in executive session.
I didn't see anything.
Is everybody okay with just having it right out here?
I'm, I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it.
Heather, you're okay with it?
Suits me fine. I just couldn't find the mute button. Sorry.
So Julie, want to just take us through this quickly?
Sure.
It's pretty.
It's pretty straightforward. I did not want to, uh, make it lengthy or cumbersome. Sorry, it's my phone. I didn't want to make it lengthy or cumbersome in any way. Um, kind of keep it simple, to the point. Um, it certainly addresses, um, uh, what we have talked about. Uh, the role of Chester ambulance, Chester fire and how it will be servicing the town of Andover. Um, the, the formulas by which we will be looking at this every year. Um, this is a one-year, as you requested, this would be a one-year contract. Um, I have it to show that it could, that it will automatically renew, uh, for one year. Um, just in case something happens at the end of the year, you just never know. Um, but at least it would cover them one extra year if something should fall apart for us. But it only renews for one term, one one-year term. Um, so definitely within the next two years, you're going to have to look at, um, do you, do you want to keep going? Do you want to do a three-year term? How do you want to do that? Um, it just builds in a little bit of a safeguard.
Even the one-year renewal would revert back to the formula that's included in here?
Everything, right. Because that is how we, that is how it's set forth in, um.
I mean, we're sticking with the price that we gave them.
We absolutely are. So in, in number five is where we talk about annually on the first day of December, we will give the Andover Select Board, um, the contribution amount expected from them in the next year. And it sets forth the formula that we will be using. And this is the formula that we talked about initially.
Go ahead Heather.
Thanks, but we have the ability to review the formula every year. Is that correct?
The formula is redone every year. If you want to change the formula, then you would do that in your, you know, your contract presentation for the next year. I mean, this contract comes up for review each year, so.
Well, and maybe, I don't see that there's this, any sentence that says that on five, maybe there could be a sentence that the formula itself will be reviewed on some kind of yearly or bi-yearly basis.
Okay. To potentially change the way we calculate the amount due, is that what you're saying?
Well, because we've had some issues and this is the first time we've really done it this way. And I think that we should allow ourselves the ability to review the formula.
Okay.
Not just the contract.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I think the, the biggest issue that everybody, that was brought up the most was people didn't know what the formula was.
Right. Right.
So now it's cut and dried. It should be a lot easier.
Right. But I'll put some language in that allows us to change this formula.
Yeah, and if we have to.
If we have to.
But I would rather, you know, if it comes up that we realize that there's some issue with the formula, sure. But Andover is also probably would be happy to have a formula that they could look to every year that would kind of be consistent. If we have an issue and something comes up and we could justify it for sure Heather, I totally agree. We should, we should have the reason, you know, the ability to change it if we have to. Yep.
Right, but there was a formula years ago that I understood. And so this formula I understand too. But I don't think we should get into a contract where we're committed to the formula when it's the first year and we don't know how the numbers are going to look year to year. So if Andover has zero, um, trips out, but they still have, um, the ability to call, you know, and how does it even out? I think, I am not a hundred percent sure that I don't want, I want to be able to assess the formula in the years to come to make sure that Chester, um, is in a good position.
Okay.
I actually have a question about the operational costs formula. So as I read, it says deficit divided by total cost times the calls per town. So is that the total calls multiplied by the calls per town? Or is that the deficit over the total calls? And that number multiplied by the time calls per town? It's a little unclear.
You take your total budget, less your capital and revenue, which is your deficit. And you divided that by the total number of calls between all towns. So if Chester has 100 and Andover has 10, you're dividing that by 110. Got it? Multiply that by the number of calls per town.
Sorry. Okay, so total calls?
Yep.
Times the calls per town? Or is that divided by?
If I have a thousand dollar budget, if my, my deficit is a thousand dollars, that's what I've got to make up in operational costs.
Right, right.
Chester has 90 calls.
Okay, so you divide that.
I'm getting a per-call cost.
The thousand dollars divided by 90 calls.
No, a thousand, so say I have 90 and Andover has 10.
Yeah.
I've got a thousand calls divided by 100 calls.
Okay.
Gets me a per-call cost.
Right, then you multiply.
Then I multiply that by my 90 and their 10.
It's not clear that, that's what that means, but.
So how can it be clear?
Well.
That is what is on the, that's why I attached like the sample.
Yeah, no, I, I think I figured it out, but for this text, which is a contract that we'll be signing, it has to be absolutely clear.
Right, so how would it be?
Right, so I would put deficit, uh, parentheses before deficit and a parentheses after calls. So that means that that function gets performed first. You divide the deficit by the total calls first. And then that number is multiplied by the calls per town.
Okay, so the total budget less the capital contributions and revenues equals your deficit.
Right, so I, it doesn't matter. So in your, in your example, you said the deficit's a thousand and the total calls is 100. So a thousand divided by 100 is 10.
Mm-hmm.
So then you multiply 10 times the total calls per town.
Yep.
Not, you're not multiplying the 100 times the total calls per town. So that's where it gets confusing, which operation you perform first? The division or the multiplication?
Okay.
And so you need to perform the division first. So that's why you put a parentheses.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, I get it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is this something that has to get reviewed by our legal before it goes or no?
Jim has looked through, he doesn't think that we need to pay him to do for what, for what we are doing.
What it is, yeah, okay.
So I have two other points if I could add it.
Yeah, correct.
So in the first page, paragraph number two, second to last line, it says, and service delivery with respect to its participant as a member of Connecticut. So is that participation as a member of Connecticut Valley Mutual aid?
Uh, inhibitor restricts CFD and CAS's commitments, undertakings, and service delivery with respect to, yeah, it's participation, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And then on the next page, uh, item number seven, I think we should add a couple of commas in there, and again, I'm sorry to be a comma Nazi, but, um, the second line after between and before or among, I would add a comma there, and then after, um, to include CAS and CFD employees, comma, are under the sole and direct management and supervision of Town of Chester. Again, I'm sorry to be a comma Nazi, but I think it makes it clear.
This will make it a lot easier for future boards.
Absolutely.
When it comes up every year.
And Julie, I really appreciate you doing the, all the work behind this. I think it'll make everybody more comfortable with what's going on.
Have they seen this draft at all?
No, 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 you guys needed to approve it first. Yeah, you guys needed to approve this first.
So we're not voting on this, we're just giving you our comments and then we're going to send it.
It's entirely how you want to do it. I mean, I, do you want to see it one more time before I send it over, given some of the changes you asked, maybe you do.
So are we going to sign it first and then they sign it, or are they going to sign it first and then we'll sign it?
I think usually they sign it first and then we sign it, but I want to make sure we have a clear document before.
Does it make that much of a difference?
Yeah.
It does?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Does it, does it make a difference on the who signs first?
Well, typically, depends on what position we want to be. Typically, I don't let you guys sign a document until the other party signed it.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I like it.
And I'll tell you why. The cell tower is precisely why.
Yeah.
Right? So it depends on what role you want to take. I mean, sitting here, I always like the other party to sign first regardless of.
Well, it does make sense, it gives you a little leeway then, in case something comes up that you totally didn't.
This is a contract we're presenting to them, they can decide to sign it.
Yeah, because they're going to want to go through it and make changes and why should we sign it?
They very well may, exactly.
Yeah, exactly. So my recommendation would be, you make the changes, as long as we're all happy with it, send it to Andover, and then see if they sign it. If they sign it, great, if they don't, then we'll talk about it some more.
So do you want this to come back to you guys on the nineteenth, or do you want me to make the changes? I mean, you can't really vote or do anything by email, so.
I don't, I don't think, I mean, we've already had the discussion unless you think there's something else we're going to miss, but.
So I'll make the changes, I, I understand what you want to be included here, so.
So we, we could approve it with changes mentioned?
Sure, it's up to you, whatever you're comfortable with.
Then you're the only one that has to sign it, correct? Chairman of the board?
But we're not, it sounds like we're not going to send it to them signed anyway.
Right, that's what I mean.
But when it comes back, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and supposedly from this, our services began on January one, so.
Correct. We sent them an email, um, letting them know that, you know, a contract was forthcoming, but that we would be providing the coverage, just to give them some assurance.
Otherwise, they wouldn't have had any coverage.
Yeah, it gives them security.
So when are we actually going to do the revision, hopefully before January of next year, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So can, are we going to see another copy or another, the other revision?
I can email, that's my question. I can, I can email it out, but, you know, you can't have conversation about it over email.
My suggestion would be, copy us when you email it to Town of Andover, and then if something comes up that we missed, we'll be able to comment on it before, unless they sign it, which I highly doubt.
Yeah, I prefer to see it one last time.
Okay.
Okay, you're the queen bee.
So the nineteenth.
Nineteenth. I mean, it, it, it's just with the changes mentioned. Uh, yeah, we could, if you'd like to see it one more time, we could do that. It's not going to really change much.
Fine.
So we'll make the corrections, we'll have the new document at our next meeting, and we can approve it at that meeting, and then we'll ship it over to Andover after that. Anything else on this contract? Any other concerns, comments, questions? All set. Next item?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second it.
Please a motion, and Jeff's the second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Happy New Year, everybody.